I'd like to call the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees' regular meeting minutes order for Thursday, May 18, 2023. We can all please stand for a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk Sol, would you please call the roll?
President Ballerine.
Here.
Trustee Gallegos.
Here.
Trustee Mateo.
Here.
Trustee Evans.
Here.
Trustee Clarity. Trustee Marsazga.
Here.
Thank you. First up tonight is the president's report. And I have several appointments for various commissions. So I'll start with the reappointments. Paul McNarland to the Economic Development Commission, Jeff Levine, Ethics Commission, Sander Kaplan, Preservation Commission, Michael Leary, Preservation Commission, Connie Guardi, Historical Commission, James Pretzrzelka, Historical Commission, and Andrew Sikowitz, Police Pension Board Commission. I also have appointments of the following individuals: Thomas Wilkens, Landscape Advisory, Andrea Jakubus, Landscape Advisory Commission, Ryan Kelly, Historical Commission, Karina Teisman, Riverside TV Commission, and Eric Pelton, Economic Development Commission. I'd like to, before we swear people in or take a motion, like to thank the people that have elected to be reappointed for their continued service to our community. And I'd like to thank the new trustee, the new commissioners for their appointments. And I think this is the first time that we've gotten several new people that have lived in town for less than five years. So this is, this is great. This is very exciting. So I appreciate you all. So if I can have a motion in a second?
Motion is made.
Motion by trustee Gallegos, second.
Second.
Second by trustee Marsazga. Clerk, roll.
Trustee Mateo.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Marsazga.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Some of them are here to be sworn in. If you could take care of that, please.
Yeah.
We will start with Tom.
I, Thomas Wilkens.
I, Thomas Wilkens.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of Landscape Advisory Commissioner.
And I will faithfully perform the duties of Landscape Advisory Commissioner.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois, to the best of my ability.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois, to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Andrea?
I, Andrea Jakubus.
I, Andrea Jakubus.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of Landscape Advisory Commissioner.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of Landscape Advisory Commissioner.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois, to the best of my ability.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois, to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Ryan?
I, Ryan Kelly.
I, Ryan Kelly.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of Historical Commissioner.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of the Historical Commissioner.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois, to the best of my ability.
To the Village of Riverside, Illinois, to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Karina?
Yep. All right, Karina.
I, Karina Teisman.
I, Karina Teisman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of Riverside TV Commissioner.
And I will faithfully perform the duties of Riverside TV Commissioner.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois, to the best of my ability.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois, to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Again, thank you all for volunteering. We appreciate it. We appreciate you coming here tonight to get sworn in. So thank you. We move on to the manager report.
I have a couple of items this evening. First, I wanted to make residents aware that Sherwin-Williams is open. While we haven't formally done their ribbon cutting, and that will be forthcoming, they are open. So if you have any painting needs, please feel free to go over and patronize one of our newer businesses. And also, I wanted to report related to businesses that StarBuds has received their interior demolition permit for those that drove down Harlem within the past day or two. There are signs announcing that a cannabis dispensary is forthcoming. Additionally, I wanted residents to be aware that we hit a huge milestone of 1,000 new water meters have been installed, which is a huge undertaking given our very limited staff, but it is such a tremendous benefit to Riverside residents. And so I wanted to praise and thank Public Works and our finance team because it is a team approach to getting these installed. Because once they're installed on the one end with Public Works, then there's a lot of administrative work that then the finance department and team has to do to make sure that the billing is up to date and everything is as it needs to be to allow for seamless billing moving forward. And then finally, our electric vehicle charging station has been installed at Riverside Foods, and they passed their final inspection. So. Oh, and also, I wanted to make the community aware that we are on a modified summer schedule. So we will not have the first board meeting in June and July this year. So our next meeting won't be until the third Thursday in June. That is all I have this evening.
Thank you. I'd like to add, the water meters, the, it's very important for the billing aspect, but I don't think people, I mean, I don't know if they grasp the capability of these meters. And that's, you know, I've had, I had a resident that water hose broke in the side of their house, and it was pouring water into their, their yard and into the street, and they didn't even notice it. The only person that noticed it was, was Dan. And he went over to the house and was able to find the thing and turn the hose off. And then when, couldn't get a hold of the resident. And then when I finally got a hold of the resident, the resident had no idea what was going on. And under the old meters, this would have been going on for, I don't know, 30 days before we would have figured it out, or he would have figured it out. So this is a tremendous asset to the residents. It's cost savings to them, and water is a finite resource. So whatever we can do to, to protect that resource is greatly appreciated. So thank you, Dan, to you and your team. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. We move on to residents' comments for non-agenda items. Is there any, Ms. Clark?
Hi, I'm Mary Robb Clark, and this is Eric Sunstrom. And we're here representing the Riverside Township Lions Club. And it is our privilege to announce the 2023 Person of the Year for his commitment to the community along with numerous other accomplishments. We will go into these accomplishments in more detail in September at a dinner when we honor Matt Buckley.
Matt? You are truly deserving of this honor, and we thank you for all that you do.
I'm usually not at a loss for words, especially when I'm up in front of the board. But I'm truly honored and humbled by this announcement. You know, this is law enforcement month, and next week is EMS week. And with my team of police, fire, EMS workers in this village, they're what make me successful in what I do on a daily basis. So truly, I'm honored to, to get this announcement. And I guess I'll have more to say in September. So thank you very much.
Congratulations, Matt. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Matt, we appreciate your commitment to our village, to our residents, keeping us safe. And you are a role model to all public first responders. So appreciate it. And just a word of advice to the Lions Club, you're gonna need a bigger room. Move on to the consent agenda. Ethan?
Approved voucher list of bills, May 18, 2023. Approved Village Board of Trustees' synodai meeting minutes, May 4, 2023. Approved Village Board of Trustees' regular meeting minutes, May 4, 2023. Review and file Public Works and Community Development April monthly reports. Review and file Landscape Advisory Commission regular meeting minutes, April 11, 2023. Review and file Foreign Fire Tax Board meeting minutes, January 4, 2023. Review and file Foreign Fire Tax Board meeting minutes, April 5, 2022. Review and file Board of Police and Fire Commissioners meeting minutes, February 20, 2023. Review and file Board of Police and Fire Commissioners Special Meeting Minutes, November 28, 2022. Review and file Board of Police and Fire Commissioners Special Meeting Minutes, November 17, 2022. Review and file Board of Police and Fire Commissioners Special Meeting Minutes, November 16, 2022. A resolution waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the village manager to enter into various purchase orders for fiscal year 2023. An ordinance of the Village of Riverside, Illinois, adopting a pre-approved vendor list, and a resolution authorizing the seller disposal of personal property owned by the Village of Riverside.
Thank you, Ethan. Do any trustees or members of the public wish to have any of these items removed? Okay, hearing none. If I can have a motion?
Motion is made.
Motion by trustee Gallegos, second.
Second.
Second by trustee Marsazga. Clerk Sol?
Trustee Mateo.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Marsazga.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Department Board and Commission reports. Are there any reports this evening?
I do have one.
Trustee Gallegos?
So as stated by our new Person of the Year, Director Buckley, it is law enforcement month. And it has also been Police Officers Week, which has been, which has had more than one memorial throughout the state and in Washington, DC. Last week was the Cook County Peace Officers Memorial, which is held in Lyons every year, May 10. President Ballerine, Director Buckley, Deputy Chief Flara, and Commander Coder, along with myself, all attended. And again, that's May 10 of every year.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
What was very interesting about the ceremony was those five officers that perished, all perished of COVID. They didn't get the same, you know, police officers didn't, didn't get to stay at home and do everything over Zoom. They still had to keep the village safe. So our hearts go out to their families. So thank you. We move on to our pending business. We start with a discussion of an update on lead line, lead service line replacement. Director Johns, please.
Good evening. I just wanted to follow up and get a little bit more consensus about the funding aspect of the lead service line replacement. The board last discussed this on February 16, 2023. And the consensus from that meeting was to continue to cover the entire lead service line replacement costs, to restore the exterior to the minimum and, and as well as the interior, there will be minimum improvements to the house to, to restore. I wanted to start off making sure that this consensus was still the consensus of the board.
Okay, everybody?
Okay.
Wait, hold on. Ms. Evans?
So it was my understanding from the materials that the costs for the emergency repairs have, are starting to add up. And I was wondering, right?
So they are. We did budget in anticipation of the, the different emergency repairs. But approximately, depending on, and Director Tab is more of an expert, but I'll add in my two cents, and then he can certainly add on to it. As it relates to the lines, it can range anywhere from 10 to approximately 12,000, depending on how long the line is. But yes, if, if there is a line that is broken, we, we have to repair it. And when there is basically, as I refer to it, a shot clock, that we have a specific timeframe in which that has to be remedied.
And so have we budgeted, like, for 10 emergencies? Like, what if there's 20 emergencies? You know, if some, some sort of climate impact, rain, or something that, you know, if there's like 20 or 25 emergencies, I know that the cost is going to.
Right. And, and so then we would have to come back to the, the board to let you know that we've, we've exceeded that. And that's why it's noted in the monthly financials, where, where we're at, if we're on target with the budget and the water and sewer fund. If there are different variances, what's going on, why are there those variances? But ultimately, if the board pivots and the village isn't paying for it, then, then that resident has to follow the shot clock. So it, it has to be done regardless.
We don't have, I mean, as a, as a, as a board, I believe the consensus is still is that we're taking this on as our responsibility. So whether it's a, an emergency, or whether it's part of a planned sewer separation, or water main, it's, it's pretty much still the same thing. Dan, did you have anything else you'd like to add?
No, that, Village Manager Francis summarized it pretty well. Emergencies, we can't, you know, we can appropriate funds. It's hard to forecast, though, because they are emergencies and not predicted. So if we have five, or we have 15, we still have to fund it. It's just, you know, how much at the end of the year it's gonna cost us. So moving forward, you know, we have our emergency repairs we do every year, and then we start doing capital improvement projects, which this year we have Schenstone. So we have 51 homes on Schenstone. You know, we haven't gone through all of them yet. So we, we don't anticipate all 51 to have a new service. I'm sure some of those will be copper. But nonetheless, the way it stands right now, the village would fund the entirety of that service as the, you know, the former decision of the board last year. So if that were to change, then the homeowner would fund their portion of it, which is to be boxed to the meter. But as it stands right now, the board decided to, to cover the entire cost moving forward. So.
Can, if, if, I'm a resident that has a lead line, and I do not want you to go into my house, and I do not want the lead line, and I tested my water, and my water's fine to my thing, I can sign an ID pH waiver?
You can sign a waiver. That would go on record with the state.
Okay. So it's, we're not forcing the residents to do this if they wish not to do it.
If you do not want the village to pay for a lead service line, you can sign a waiver.
Okay. Just, I mean, there may be some people out there, so it should be clear. So.
And if I may note, as it relates to expenses, we're very fiscally prudent. And so we do have healthy balances to anticipate for some of these expenses. But obviously, if we're drawing down on the fund balance in the water and sewer fund, paying for these unanticipated replacements, then there's, has to be a larger discussion in totality of adjustment and rates.
And two weeks ago, just to give you all an update, I was down at Springfield and got to speak with Representative Hernandez, Representative Rashid, Senator Portillo, Senator Cervantes. And I got a call from Representative Rashid yesterday, saying that Riverside was getting some appropriations. We didn't, we haven't received it yet. It's not gonna, it's not a huge amount, but every little bit helps. So we'll, we'll, we'll make note of that when, when the funds hit the bank. But that's, was a good positive sign.
Yeah, we have a larger application still on file with the state that we submitted over a year ago. We haven't heard anything concrete on that, but it is on file. You know, the interesting part is the criteria going in 2024 is gonna change for eligibility on that. And that's kind of why we're having this discussion as well. It's because we wouldn't necessarily be eligible moving forward for full funding.
And I, I did reiterate the fact that Riverside is unique, and the fact that we have a large amount of this. And, and the, the bill as it's written, when it spells it out for particular years, those, those particulars don't necessarily necessarily fall in with our planned sewer lines or planned road instructions. So to, to rip up a road, just to do lead lines, when we're gonna be there two years later, doesn't make a whole lot of sense. And they all agreed with that. So hopefully, some tweaks will be made to the, to the bill so we can get around that, or some extensions. So. So we all, we all in consensus, and we're good? Yes?
Oh, I still have consensus, but I just want to make sure I understand the potential funding options. Because it looked from our materials as though we were not going to qualify for the state grants for this.
Possibly.
And I was wondering if the grants were different from the IEPAs Public Water Supply Low Interest Loan Program, if that's different or not?
The, the monies that they were giving to us were, were considered infrastructure dollars. So they, so that they can go in, go ahead, Karen.
The, I, we originally applied for forgivable IEPA low interest loans. Okay. But it does not seem, based on the new criteria, that we will get forgivable loans. So the estimates before you, and I'll, I'll help talk through the two different options, do include issuing debt service. I did estimate at the IEPA low interest loan rate. Okay, the 1.1%? Mm-hmm. Okay.
So do you want to go through the funding options that we discussed last time, just to make sure we, we're on the right track?
So the total cost of these lead service line replacements for the, the village are approximately $7 million. In the current capital improvement plan, we have a $5 million alternative debt issuance in 2025, which may be increased up to $9 million. And the 2030 debt issuance would increase from $6 million to $10 million. The additional debt service for this increases is estimated at $2.20 to $2.25 per 100,000 gallons. So I wanted to talk through the two different tables in front of you. I have one based on debt service. So you'll see overall, the large increases, or the difference from the CIP plan are highlighted in yellow. That's the additional debt service options, the additional potential revenues created from fees, and the anticipated expenses. So at, in the blue and green box all the way at the, the bottom, you'll see the increases for water and sewer rate in blue and in green. For the, sorry, for the total, sorry, the blue is the minimum bill, the green is the average user bill. So this, you'll see somewhat large jumps in the rates in 2026 and in 2031. Those would, would be the years where we need that additional revenue to start paying for the debt service. I've also put in front of you tonight, the other chart is based on more of a smoothing technique. So there would be less of a shock to the homeowner each year. But there would be approximately $1.15 on average rate increase annually per unit. So again, this shows you, in the blue box at the bottom, is the minimum bill that we see for each household, and then the average bill that we see throughout the, throughout the town. Wanted to get some feedback from the board if they liked the smoothing technique, or if they liked the idea of issuing the rate increases based on the debt service schedules.
So just so we understand, smoothing technique takes the, the total and just smoothes it out over the next several years?
Mm-hmm.
So the increases are gonna be less dramatic at various different points?
Correct. Okay.
Listen. Everybody?
I agree that smoothing is better for the average person's comfort level with all of this, which is going to be extraordinary anyway.
I anticipate the next water rate increase from McCook arriving in the next month. While this schedule doesn't suggest starting the increase in rates till 2024, if you would like, I could start that with the 2023 rate increase, so that we would only have one rate increase a year at the same time as we do our McCook increase, instead of having a January increase for potentially the lead sewer line portion, and then the rate increase due to commodity costs in June.
Together?
Yeah, single one with, with.
Okay. Are there any questions about the lead service line funding? I know it's a, it's a lot of, a lot to take in.
And what, let's just say that a pot of money falls from the sky. And how does that, how, will we then reduce these rates? Or, or how will that be worked?
I do have it somewhat tracked out as the portion of the rate, which is for lead service line. So the board could reduce that portion of it, or they could, could use it for other projects in the lead, in the water and sewer fund as well. As you know, from the capital improvement discussions, there are a lot of projects for that fund. But that would be brought back to the board if, for some reason, the fund balance projections were, were growing more than our expenses did.
So basically, what we could do is we can accelerate some of the separations and some of the replacements to, to, to work within this, this 17-year period that they haven't changed yet?
Potentially. There is a portion. We try to mirror our water and sewer projects with our road projects. So we need to also make sure that we have the appropriate balances to resurface the roads at the same time.
Thank you. Any questions from anybody, from Director Johns? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Karen. We'll move on to the discussion regarding parking traffic calming and parking code changes. Director Johns?
Good evening. Included in your board packet is a map of the current allocations of Lot 8 parking. We are currently in a one-year trial for that lot, allowing spaces 21 through 32 to be used as business employee parking if they request a quarterly sticker. They are also allowed to park on Quincy Street with no time restrictions. EDC discussed this at their last meeting and recommended that we continue the trial for one more year. Also in front of you is survey results from the businesses. The most common concerns from those surveys was signage, which we did add signage in, I believe, April of this year for spots 21 through 32. We could potentially add a sign also at the entrance of the lot, letting people know that there is parking available there. But the EDC did recommend staying for one more year.
Did they say why they want to extend it for another year?
They were concerned, or with some of the businesses saying that they were confused on where people could park. We wanted to see if people really start parking in those lots. We have seen more traffic on, or more of the stickers being used on the streets. So we would encourage in the quarterly renewal to park in the parking lot spots, as well as the signage improvements.
We're gonna encourage you to park in those spots?
Businesses.
Okay, so that customers can park in the street? Mm-hmm. Was there, was there also a discussion on issuing the owners or principals of the businesses year-long permits as opposed to quarterly? There was a couple requests to issue annual parking passes. I'm not quite sure how to, and we could edit our forms to make this a little easier for them to designate who gets the, it would be four stickers at once. But typically, we've done quarterly passes for business employee due to the turnover of some of the staff.
Okay. Consensus to maintain status quo for the next year?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, now it's all around.
Is there any interest of the board to investigate if any of the businesses would be interested in long-term leases of those spots to be used? be interested in long-term leases of those spots to be used for resident, sorry, to use for employee or patron parking? We've gotten requests in the past from both apartments, and there was a request from a, a business through the survey.
But we're oversold in that lot, the way it is, by commuters?
Correct. So we could potentially reduce some of the business parking. I don't know if this was just a request. I, there was no funding tied to it in the survey results. So if this is something that you'd like me to explore more with them, I could.
Well, unless we can figure a way to pull parking from the sky, I don't know, we don't have anything to sell. The only option we have is, we have had discussions with, with the bank, and they are considering
Mm-hmm.
relinquishing the five spots in that, a lot. But we have not had it in writing yet. So I think that's a discussion that we have to wait till we actually have something to give away.
Okay.
Or so. Does that, does someone have a question? Yes.
So they, we went, we're discussing whether to, you know, make a deal with the businesses for spots in Lot 8? And, and not in the, not the parking along the street?
Correct. There was a request from Center for Physical Therapy for dedicated spots for their patrons.
And that makes sense because they would just walk up the stairs and go over to the, because it's right near their business, so that makes sense.
It's at the other, currently, it's at the other end of the lot for the business employee parking. They were also unaware of the trial, so that was another reason to extend it, that now they're very clearly aware of the trial and that their employees can park there.
Any other questions? Okay. Let's, let's keep pursuing First American.
Okay.
Okay, continue.
Lot 12 is located at 3320 Harlem. The board had previously instructed staff to use this lot as metered parking. However, this was put on hold due to the marketing of this property with 363 Burlington. After that, I think I will, is it Director Tab that's handling the Harlem Avenue parking?
I, that, that's me.
Oh, sorry.
And then Director Tab can provide.
Simon?
Yes. So I will start with Berkeley. As noted in the agenda history sheet, back in 2020, we, the board and staff got feedback related to cut through traffic in that area. We had installed do not enter signage and restricted turning west off of Harlem Avenue onto Berkeley. And during that process, and also during the feedback when the, initially, we were working with Dr. Noor Amadi for the parking, what is to be a parking lot at 2710 South Harlem, the village board gave feedback to staff of, you know, if, if we're making this additional parking lot and this is going to be a dispensary, let's revisit the traffic concerns of the Berkeley residents. And so we worked with our village engineer. As is presented in the packet, includes a bump out, which would then restrict westbound traffic on Berkeley. We provided it to, they, they had designated an individual to kind of coordinate feedback for residents on Berkeley, and so I had provided that and asked for any additional feedback on it. They were very receptive to what had been done and appreciated the fact that both the village was being mindful of their concerns, but also by creating that bump out, we could then remove the do not enter signs, which would then address the, the concerns of the townhouse residents, which is right now, they can't turn right off of Harlem and go into their driveway. They have to go all the way down to Long Common and then turn around, wrap around. And while they, they have done it, that has been an expressed issue for, for them, an inconvenience. And so as it is currently laid out, the Berkeley residents are very appreciative, and they're hopeful that the village board will move forward with creating the bump out. The reason why I am requesting this now, and I recognize that is not an item that is budgeted for, is because the dispensary is well underway. They anticipate opening in August, so their timeframe has been definitely fast-tracked. And so based on that, we want to get this, this worked on to try to mitigate any type of impact of traffic flow for residents on Berkeley. And so the recommendation of staff would be to move forward. We would bid it out with one of our other projects to get it done in short order, and then once it is completed, we would remove the do not enter signs and relocate them to where the bump out would be, and so would allow for the Berkeley residents to go east, but no one would be able to come west further than the bump out onto Berkeley. So that is the first item.
Is there any questions on that? Everybody agree that we should move forward with doing the improvements as soon as possible?
Yes.
Okay.
I just want to note too, that it will be paid for out of the business district, because it is within the boundaries of Harlem Avenue Business District Number One, and it is an eligible expense.
Okay.
What's the drive aisle with, next to the bump out?
It's on the, on the, on here, but I can't read it.
I believe it's 12 feet.
Okay. Thanks.
Big enough for one car?
Mm-hmm.
And one fire engine?
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
The next item is related to a parking request from basic, Dr. Noor Amadi, who owns Shining Smiles and also the Strip Center located on Harlem Avenue at Harlem and Long Common. He had reached out because while the dispensary is allowing him to utilize the parking lot while they're doing the improvements on the interior, he, his staff will be displaced once they are finalizing the exterior and once they open. And so they have to be open for one month before we can close on our property with him, and then in addition to that, the build-out of 2710 South Harlem for the parking lot. And so he was asking the board if, whether or not the village would allow, similar to the request of the Quincy businesses, to allow on-street parking, though his would be for a shorter amount of time. It would be employees only, so that the Strip Center parking would only be for patrons, so we would be able to monitor it. If there were issues, the, then we would be able to reach out directly to those businesses because it would be permitted only. And he's only asking for it during the time in which he is displaced from the dispensary parking lot and is building the new parking lot.
And this is on Long Common?
Correct.
Near the resident, in the residential area?
Correct.
On the, like, when you're turning from Harlem into Long Common and it's on the right?
As you drive into Riverside? Yes.
That's a lot of cars, but I don't see a, any alternative. Where else are they going to go?
Well, it's a lot of cars, but it's very, very similar to Woodside. You know, when we put the parking boxes along Woodside, we did that for two reasons. Is one, to, to delineate the parking, but also to calm the street down, because it was a fast street. I think a parking along Long Common might have that same reward as calming the, the traffic speeds going down Long Common. So I think maybe the residents might actually welcome some of that.
Give a little favor. Yes, I agree.
For how long? Go ahead. They'll be notified, right?
If the board is supportive of this, yes, we would notify them and then provide them what the timeframe is. So it would be multiple notifications from my perspective, because the initial notification would let them know that this is forthcoming, and then when the time is approaching, letting them know, here's the estimated timeframe, so that they know the impacted hours, what days of the week, and things of that sort.
What is, what is the timeframe? Do we have some sort of idea?
So, the dispensary is anticipating opening in August, so I anticipate probably by early, if not mid-July, those employees for that Strip Center are going to be displaced, because they're going to need to do some exterior work that's gonna, they're going to need full utilization of the parking lot. And then from that point in time, the dispensary anticipates being open by August. It could be sooner, depending on how quickly they, they move through the process. And so it would be from that point in time to construction, and, you know, depending on how quickly their contractor works, I mean, we will certainly make sure that the permit is ready to go upon closing.
We should, six months? By the end of the year?
Oh, I would, I, I wouldn't anticipate that long. I, I would say three to four months.
All right. Perfect. Okay? We have, we have this angled parking yet?
Well, that's next. And so as we have been meeting with Starbuds and reviewing different items, they approached staff about angled parking off of Berkeley. And I did let the residents know on Berkeley about this, though I, from my perspective, I don't believe it would impact them, simply for the fact that it's not, it's going to be individuals either going through the main parking lot and then turning around off, off onto Berkeley from making a right. And it's also going to be exclusively for their employees. As noted in the agenda history sheet, they anticipate at any point in time, eight to 10 employees being at the dispensary. And so this will allow, Director Tab made a great little layout. We had to kind of put this together in very short order, so I apologize for it not being included in the packet. But he worked with our village engineer to come up with how many we could actually feasibly put in this space if the board authorized it, and it would be approximately four spaces. But as Director Tab noted, it would eliminate two on-street parking spots, which right now there is a parking restriction. You can only park on one side of the street, and trees would need to be removed.
Those are very big trees.
So we're gaining, they're gaining two parking spots and losing two very mature trees. Have they made a strong case for that, that they need two extra spots?
They have said that they need additional parking, that the lot in and of itself, well, we are going to do an onsite visit with them to try to figure out how they can maximize the lot and the space. This was a request that they made, and so I told them that I would certainly provide it to the village board. They have also offered to pay for it, the public improvement.
Dan, can you answer why you have it angled that way and not the other way? So as people pull in, they would be able, this, this way, they have to come through the parking lot and then go back out. Why?
If it's angled the other way, they're going to pull in ahead on traffic, because it'd be a two-way street.
Yeah, this makes more sense.
So they can only leave through Berkeley?
They can only leave through Harlem.
Oh, so they're going toward Harlem?
They're going towards Harlem.
East, okay.
Yep. So like Village Manager Francis noted, the intent is for employee parking here. So they're going to come in the beginning, the, the spots will be, in theory, taken the majority of the day, and then they'll leave after, depending on whenever they close. So there won't be, in theory, a lot of traffic coming down Berkeley to fill those spots. It'll be the employees coming through the parking spots, or the parking lot itself.
Thank you.
You said you're going to work with them on their existing parking design to see how to maximize that? Is that?
There, there's definitely going to be an effort made to do that. I don't know how much, you know, obviously, they have to follow certain state requirements, and so their, their plan is dictated by different requirements from the state. And so we will certainly throw out different ideas to them, but they, I think they were anticipating more than four parking spots, but it came out to only being four based on the required width.
At, my view, they're leasing this space, right? This isn't necessarily a permanent, it could be, I don't know, I wish them all, right? For a net two parking spot win, to lose two mature trees doesn't, I, I guess I'd rather wait, at least wait and see if you're able to, maybe you can get a net win of two other spots by redesigning the parking lot, maybe not, but I guess I'd rather see if that's possible.
The other option is, we allow the dispensary the same thing we allow Quincy Street, and give five parking passes so they can park on Long Common.
For two years or forever?
For, same thing we do with Quincy. They, we don't, you know, as long as those businesses are there, I mean, this dispensary is, is, is going to be, they're going to have several 10 employees. That's a lot of parking.
But Long Common is residential, that's a little different.
I, 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 I agree, but I don't think it's much different than Woodside. And Woodside gets parking all the way down from the school.
Or any of the other streets, the, like Shenstone and the others that are near businesses where people park in the residential area to walk to.
Right.
Right.
So that's another, that's another option.
I, I just wanted to, I just agree with Jill, with Jill and Megan that I, I would like to find a solution or some sort of compromise where we don't, we don't have to cut down two large trees.
I agree with that.
So we haven't done the measurements. An alternative option would be to allow for parallel parking and do, you would still lose the green space, but keep the tree and do a cut, a notch into that green space to allow for pull-in parallel parking on either side, and then you'd be able to allow for parking on both sides. The cost is double, though.
But how many spots does that win?
Still a win of two spots.
Some that too.
But you're not losing trees.
So I have seen that on my train, right, lately. I've noticed Berwyn is doing something similar, where they've got new parking spaces in those little cutouts?
Mm-hmm.
They look nice.
Also, they, Starbuds would have to make the decision of, is this additional two spots worth? Because it would be approximately 50,000 to 60,000. And if they're, they're paying for this improvement...
Or we can make the decision that it's worth it to save the trees, and we'll pay for the, the improvement.
Okay. For a leased property, I'm not sure.
We're just throwing that out.
It is an option.
It's an option.
I mean, it does, I, I think, I'm open to that. I guess I'd want to see if the measurements worked out and understand that. That seems like it could be a general improvement to the location, certainly for the leased property, but could improve the location and still maintains the trees, and we know parking is limited. And so if that's feasible, I'd be interested to hear more about it.
Okay.
Could we see, discuss, or can you plan to come back and give you an answer at the next board meeting? Is that enough time?
Sure. We can certainly talk with Orion and have him look at that. So the preference is to notch out the, the parkway and not do the angled parking.
Unless there's a feasible way.
The option is to try to keep the trees.
I, I clear on my view, it's, it's a, it's only a net win of two spots. To me, I don't know how many spots a tree is worth, but it's got to be more than two more spots for losing two trees.
Manager Francis, might we get a report, brief report from Forester Collins about the age and health of the trees and what impact even notching would do to their roots and survival?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay.
I'm liking your parking pass idea more than the President's.
Thank you. Well, that's one of our options, we have several options, so. All right, we will move this discussion to second meeting in June. Is that good enough time?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for the drawing.
The final item is from Director Tab, and it's regarding handicap parking, to create handicap parking on Fairbank Road by Swan Pond. And I will turn it over to him.
All right. Last year, the board directed staff to investigate a way to allow ADA parking for the use of the southern end of the path. While we currently have two handicap spots on Burling, on the northern end of the path, it would take some doing to get to the southern end through the sidewalk down Berry Point and, and Fairbank. So I met with Orion, we discussed it, and we're proposing to do two on-street handicap parking spots on Fairbank, on the southern end of the path, probably 100 to 200 feet off of Berry Point. And then with those spots, you have to have access aisles. And I believe I have a map on... And I believe I have a map on, in front of you, that shows an access aisle on the eastern side of the parking spots. It would be five feet wide, exposed to aggregate. And then there's a connector path that ties into the current walking path, again, five feet wide, approximately 20 feet long. So the parallel access aisle to the roads, 40 feet long, five feet wide, connector to the walking path, five feet wide, 20 feet long. Two spots.
And it's already designated as parking anyways, it's just-
There's a sign there, you can't park from a specific sign to the corner, but in this area, and if you look at the photos in your packet, we're not taking any trees down, it's already, it's an open area. It's north of the sign that's currently there, so it is eligible parking.
Very sensible, I'm in favor of it.
What's, go ahead, go ahead, please.
So we're gonna cut into the parkway?
We're gonna put a sidewalk on the parkway with a depressed curb. So, we're not, we're putting a sidewalk, not necessarily parking spots in the parkway.
So the red is the sidewalk?
That's sidewalk. Sorry, I should have labeled, but yes.
Why, why didn't we move this closer to the park, the sidewalk that's already there? All the, to the side, to the street, to the, to the bridge?
Well, you don't want people parking on the road, and you come around a corner, you're gonna hit the cars. That's why that sign's currently there, no parking here to corner.
But if we put, I, I don't, when we were talking about this, I, and my envision was that we were gonna do something very similar to what was at Patriots Park, and put a cut-in.
Well, this is the least impactful version, and the cheapest.
Oh, so that would be more expensive?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I think I understand why you can't get any closer to the corner, which I think was our original hope and intent, that it would be proximate to the-
Sure.
-payment that was already there. However, one thing that I would just suggest, based on my experience with the Preservation Commission, is that Olmstead was not a fan of perpendiculars and right angles, so with respect to the path it's proposed, rather than doing a T, if we could have a gentle curve from the access point to the existing path, that would be greatly appreciated. I think you may hear similar comments from Preservation and from Land State Advisor.
We'll take the same look at it as we did with Turtle Park.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Do you have enough?
I do.
Okay.
Thank you.
We move on to C, Electrical Vehicle Charging Station Grant Application. Director Tab.
It's me again. All right. So the U.S. Department of Transportation released a notice of funding for electric vehicle charging stations and a lot of alternative fuel filling stations. The, this is under a grant termed the Charging and Fueling Infrastructure Discretionary Grant Program. It's mouthful, but in essence, it's broken down into two different grant opportunities. One is an alternative fuel corridor grant, and a community charging and fueling program grant. The first, we are not eligible for, because you have to be within a mile of, in essence, a highway. We are 1.8 miles north of I-55. By the time we get to the location, we're over two miles, so we are, would be eligible for the Community Charging and Fueling Grant Program. And basically, what that is, is we have, we're able to install a charging station on any public road that is accessible to the public 24 hours a day. So the two spots that we're proposing for this would be Metro Meter Lot 1, which we discussed previously when we discussed EV charging stations, and the Green Parking Lot on Quincy. So those are the two spots that we're proposing for this grant. Within the terms of the grant, we have to, so the, the grant, or the intent of the grant is to dig once, in essence. They want to install infrastructure for, you know, increased use down the road, they don't want to have to come back and dig again. So, this is more expensive than we originally went around on this for various factors, but the one is, the infrastructure is to be installed should you ever want to increase the number of charging stations at that location. So we're proposing for two pedestals at each location, which would accommodate four cars. The infrastructure will be in place to double that down the road, should we ever be interested. Included in the grant is costs associated with maintenance of five years. That's maintenance on pedestal, warranty, cellular data to process the payments, so that's all wrapped up into it. And then, as far as the funding goes, there's a 20% cost match for the village. So for both these locations, infrastructure in place for up to eight stalls of charging to locations. All the associated maintenance and warranty work and cellular for the five-year period comes out to $560,000 for the two locations. Our portion of that, the 20%, is $112,000. So I'm coming to the board to get your opinion as to whether this is worth moving forward on. There's, we're going into this with not only the engineering firm, but Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, they're kind of doing a parallel grant application. As we move down the road, if one seems to be taking the lead, that's the one we're gonna be going with. The pool, in theory, would be greater with Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, because they have, you know, a vast number of communities to deal with. The feds like to see big grant pools. It's easier for them to kind of dole out the grants, so. We're not sure exactly who we're gonna go with, whether we're gonna go with our engineering firm, or the Mayor's Caucus at this point, which everyone seems to get to the, the endpoint faster is probably who we're gonna go with. But nevertheless, depending on who we go, it's, we still have that cost match. So should we receive funding, we'd be on the hook for the $112,000 for the two sites, and we would have until 2030 to install them.
Any questions? Is there any regulations on charging? What we can charge, or we can, or to recoup our costs?
Not that I'm aware of.
So we can, we can charge electricity and stuff like that?
Right. And these would be level-two chargers.
What's the reasoning? I, I get the reasoning for the metro station. What's the reasoning for the green parking lot in the business district when we already have one across the street?
Well, the one across-
So that was, you know, Director Tab asked me about that, and I said we should include it, and my thoughts are, we, you know, while we don't necessarily have the volume today, we should be planning for 10, 15 years down the line, and there is going to be that need. And so, two charging stations, you know, Riverside Foods is not going to be sufficient, so we should be planning accordingly. And so that was, based on the dialogue, we were having kind of the consensus.
I entirely agree with that, just based on what I've been learning through the Cross Community Climate Collaborative, and the grant programs that are available now that may not be available to build out that infrastructure in the future. So I think, to the extent that we can apply for a competitive grant, you know, competitively with a group that stands a large chance at success, that we absolutely should do it now.
This side? Agree?
Yes.
And just to be clear, these would only be grant contingent projects, we're not gonna take this on ourselves.
Thank you, Dan.
All right.
Appreciate it. We move on to new business. The first item is a resolution authorizing 387,194 inter-fund transfer from General Fund to the Capital Project Fund to fund future capital expenditures. Director Jones.
Good evening. Before you tonight, are, is a capital transfer of 387,194. This is 125,000 from the General Fund Parks and Recreation Assigned Fund balance for the repayment of the 43 Quincy build-out. This greatly exceeds their $25,000 repayment schedule, they're looking to pay this sooner based on surpluses. Additionally, there is a 260, sorry, 262,194, $194 general fund unassigned fund transfer for 2023 budgeted purchases.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any questions? Hearing none, if I can have a motion in a second?
Motion is made.
Motion by Trustee Gallegos, second. Second by Trustee Mateo. Any further comments? Hearing none, Ethan?
Trustee Mateo.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Marshask.
Aye.
Motion carries. B, An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year commencing January 1st, 2022, and ending December 31st, 2022, for various additional expenditures and revenues. Director Jones.
Good evening. On an annual basis, the board approves amendments to the budget where there are outstanding revenue, or expenditures that exceed the budget. Also, there are corresponding revenues that exceeded their budget as well. Overall, the general fund revenues exceeded their budgets by approximately 2,301,000, and expenditures exceeded their budgets by 638,000. This represents an operating surplus of approximately $2,350,000 before transfers. Detailed out in the Exhibit A to the ordinance is exactly which line items will be adjusted and reasonings why.
Thank you. Any questions from anyone? Hearing none, if I can have a motion?
Motion is made.
Motion by Trustee Gallegos, second. Second by Trustee Mateo. Any further comments? Clerk Sol.
Trustee Mateo. Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Marshask.
Aye.
Motion carries. We move on to trustee reports on cross-climate communication. Does any have, does anyone have any trustee reports this evening? Mr. Mateo.
So Riverside Arts Weekend is coming back, it's coming up before our first meeting in June, the third Thursday. So it's June 10th and 11th, so we're back in, they're back in Guthrie Park. Old habits die hard. There'll be live music and performances, food and drink, a children's table to do an art project, and back for the first time since 2019, juried artists. So, put it on the calendar, June 10th and 11th, and the committee will probably be looking for volunteers, so grab a family member, a friend, and spend a couple hours in the park.
Thank you. Any other?
I have another one.
Evans.
I just would like to do another quick pitch for becoming a member of the Friends of the Library. You can donate any amount to become a member. The funds go a long way toward summer reading programs, accessibility projects, larger-scale accessibility projects. In the past, we've supported fixing the elevator to enhance accessibility, and just, you know, a lot of other, you know, the Makerspace, a lot of the equipment in the Makerspace is paid for with our, with the funds raised. So please, support your local library and become a member.
Thank you. Any other questions before we get to C4?
One, one more.
Mr. Gallegos.
Well, you're hard out to follow, you're so theatrical.
All right, all right, I will, I will.
I'll be short. Okay, so this Sunday, kayaking return by rentals, which are still available, you can look that up on our recreation page. The American Legion will be hosting their annual Memorial Day services, which will start at 10 o'clock on that Monday, the 29th, at St. Mary's, and it'll be followed by the River Reef Ceremony by Swan Pond and Guthrie Park. And then June 4th is the annual Scuff Rose Riverside Regatta.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
And before we do the C4, I should have done this in the president's report, and I apologize for missing it, but I wanted to congratulate one of our residents. Judge Chloe Pedersen was, she was appointed as a circuit court judge last Friday. I was fortunate enough to go down to Chicago to the Supreme Court courtroom and watch her investiture. So it's a wonderful honor for her, was a wonderful honor for, for me, and I wish her all the best, and it's wonderful having Chloe on the bench. With that, we will move to C4.
Okay, all right. Actually, before I do C4, I'll do my fun little plug for, so that we're all, because I have a lot to talk about with C4. So, on Saturday of this week, in Big Ball Park, I hope that you all come out to see the vintage baseball game that is being sponsored by the Olmstead Society. You will see the Chicago Salmon and the, oh, I can't remember who they're playing, but they play in hoop skirts and, you know, have, have halftime shows, and so look out for that. Bring a lawn chair, bring a picnic, and just enjoy a good old-fashioned time out there. Moving on to C4, this is really very exciting. Over the last couple of weeks, you may have noticed through Eflash and updates to the C4 webpage of the village website, that we have been doing surveys based upon the community feedback that was given at the Road to 2050 event and surveys back in January, to try to get more community awareness and engagement on the ideas that were generated for each of the different priority areas being placed, prosperity, health and well-being, connectivity, living infrastructure, and resource regeneration. So all of this is going to eventually go into recommendations for climate action and resilience plans that will be implemented by, you know, all of our area stakeholders, so the village, the township, our schools, you know, will all have a part to play in, in the future as we work towards these things. But since it is so community-driven, these surveys are very important. You may see some posters around town that look a little bit like this. This is a seven-question survey on community connections and technology that came out this week. While that process is underway, we are also gearing up for a community asset mapping event, which will be held here in Township Hall on Tuesday, June 20th. And that's gonna be kind of a fun, interactive opportunity for members of the public to come out and just play with big maps of Riverside, make kind of messy maps, and identify what's an asset in town, and where are our risk points, what could be improved? And there will be a lot of sticker-ing, a lot of engagement, a lot of activity surrounding all of this. So this is yet another opportunity for public engagement and feedback that we're really looking forward to. Chicago Wilderness is going to be facilitating this for us, so it's gonna be a lot of fun. And with that, one of the other things that will be discussed at our C4 team meeting next Thursday at the library at 7:00, is the possibility of having a presence in the Fourth of July parade. We are considering reaching out to residents who are electric vehicle owners, and maybe seeing if they would like to have a presence in connection with C4. And so we're gonna explore interest in that at our next meeting. So if you are an AV owner, and you would like to, you know, come out and celebrate some spirit with us in a very quiet, clean way, you know, come to our meeting next week, and we'll talk about it. That's all I have.
Can you tell us when meeting's at? I don't know if I heard that.
Yeah, it's 7:00 at the Riverside Public Library on Thursday. It's always the last Thursday of every month, always in the terrace room.
Thank you.
So, yes, thank you.
Any other reports? Okay, hearing none. The board does have a need for an executive session this evening to discuss the acquisition of real property, the appointment, employment compensation, discipline of performance or dismissal of a specific employee or legal counsel, and discuss probable imminent or pending litigations. The board will not convene, and no final action will be taken, so I would ask for a motion and a second to adjourn to executive session.
Motion. And seconded.
Motion by Trustee Mateo, seconded by Trustee Gallegos. Clerk Sol.
Trustee Mateo.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Marshask.
Aye.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.